Thank you very much. We will move to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move to other council actions. Consider execution of the Ector County Utility District, also known as ECUD, water supply and ancillary services. Mr. Moreira.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item for your consideration this evening are agreements with the Ector County Utility District and the City of Odessa for water supply and ancillary services. As you know, we've been working with our partners at ECUD for some time on these agreements. The City of Odessa and ECUD share a decades-long history with one another in supplying treatment water and services to the residents of West Odessa. In September of 2014, the city entered into its previous contract with the Ector County Utility District. The previous contract expired in September of 2019, and we've operated on a month-to-month basis since then. When that contract was negotiated in 2014, the goal of ECUD in the city was to eventually provide water to ECUD at a wholesale cost without providing any other operations, maintenance, meter reading, or billing and collection services. Previous contract was executed in order to give ECUD time to prepare to take over the operations and maintenance of their own system, as well as meter reading and billing and collection services. ECUD has taken positive steps to reach their goal of being an independent operator of their water system and is very close to achieving that status. Under the current month-to-month arrangement, ECUD is required to pay a rate of 1.3 times the average city's commercial industrial water rate, and the city is required to operate and maintain ECUD's water supply system. This rate also includes the meter reading and billing and collection services provided by the city. Negotiation between parties have finalized, and ECUD's board has approved the new water supply contract and ancillary services in substantially the same format as in the attachments. Staff recommends the following water supply contract and ancillary services be approved for execution. The water supply, lab services, distribution, and system operation and billing and collection services agreements all have an effective date of October 1, 2019, picking up where the previous agreement expired. The respective terms and conditions of the agreements are as follows, and these are just highlights. Under the water supply contract, the initial term is for 30 years with two optional 10-year renewals. ECUD will set the maximum and average MGD daily for the wholesale water rates. The rate will be established based on a wholesale rate model agreed to by both parties and will be reviewed or revised by both parties annually. The lab services agreement is for a one-year term and renews annually in one-year terms automatically. Follows the same terms and conditions as all other lab services agreement that the city enters into, and fees are based on a rate schedule for the city's lab services as amended from time to time. Under the distribution and system operations agreement, the city agrees to provide certain services to assist ECUD in operating and maintaining its water supply system when needed. Agreed-to services include but are not limited to water sampling, set and removal of meters, manual meter reading at 101 locates, AMI maintenance, leaking and inoperable fire hydrant repair, and valve maintenance. The initial term of the agreement is for one year with automatic month-to-month renewal. Either party can terminate by providing a 30-day advance written notice. Fees have been agreed to by both parties for the initial term. Any extension will include a base monthly fee, administrative fee, and fees at direct cost for specific tasks completed under this agreement. The billing and collection services agreement includes tasks, but tasks include but are not limited to, rather, in-office telephone, customer service, service initiation of accounts, customer account maintenance, and sending out of monthly bills on behalf of ECUD. The city also collects fees on behalf of ECUD. The initial term of the agreement is for one year with automatic month-to-month renewals. Either party can terminate by providing a 30-day advance written notice. However, the city does agree to not terminate prior to April 1, 2021 in order to give ECUD sufficient opportunity to establish their own billing and collection system. And then finally, the annexation and CCN boundaries agreements provide for areas within the city's ETJ where ECUD shall not annex into its boundary. It also provides that the city will not oppose the ECUD's certificate of conveyance and necessity as long as it conforms to the boundaries outlined in the agreement. Finally, I want to thank the city council. I especially want to thank council members Dean and Grant for their participation. I want to thank the staff of Public Works, and I certainly want to thank ECUD for their partnership and working through this process, and I'll echo the same sentiments as Bill and Tommy. We really have enjoyed working through this process, and finally, I'm finally glad that we've gotten to this point. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment, and I have to reiterate, Michael, what you're saying. Kudos to the staff and also tremendous kudos to Tommy Irwin and also Bill Fowler for all the work that this has done in creating a great partnership for the future, and thank all of you for your hard work and dedication doing this. Thank y'all.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Mayor, this is Bill Fowler. Let me just state that the agreements that were presented in the package, there have been minor changes, and we're hoping that the council will approve the contracts with the latest amendments that we have made, all being non-substantial. With that understanding, then we would urge the council to adopt all of the contracts.
And I would concur with Mr. Fowler's observation.
I will make that motion then, Mr. Turner.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move to resolutions. Consider accepting a grant funding from Walmart Community Grants Team and Facilities, number 3645, and appropriating funds for the Odessa Fire and Rescue. Chief Alvarez.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Moreira, and congratulations, Mr. Moreira, on your 20 years. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So item for consideration this evening, Council Mayor, is, you know, Odessa Fire Rescue, we received a grant award in the amount of $2,000 on behalf of Walmart, Walmart Community Grants Team. And this is actually the third grant that we have received, but it's in the amount of $2,000, and we'll use this to purchase any type of equipment that we might need for Odessa Fire Rescue or any type of training items that we might need. So we did reach out to Walmart. We conveyed our appreciation for their continued support of Odessa Fire Rescue.
Great. Any questions for Chief? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
A move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Next, we go to authorizing renewal and execution of industrial district agreements Mueller Incorporated, Industrial District, AZ Industrial Construction Group, formerly Woolly Tools, Industrial District, JTF Enterprises LLC, Industrial District, Elliott Partners, LTD, formerly Woolly Tool, Industrial District. Ms. Brooks?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Regarding the industrial district agreements that expire on December 31, 2020, this is a request for council to authorize the renewal and execution of the industrial district agreements that the mayor read out, which is Mueller Enterprises, AZ Industrial Group, Elliott Partners, and JTF Enterprises. Of note, we received a returned industrial district agreement from TSBW2, and we received that on Friday, so it did not get added to this agenda due to the deadline. However, that will be on the next council agenda.
Hey, are there any questions from council?
This is Peggy. Natasha, these renewals are for what period of time?
These are the ones that we agreed to do for the seven years.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Ms. Brooks? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
A move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, consider accepting and appropriating funds for $80,000 donation to the City of Odessa Police Department from Bustin' for Badges Clay Shoot Fund. Chief K.
Good evening. I come before you'd ask that you accept a donation of $80,000 from Bustin' for Badges Clay Shoot. And it's not just a clay shoot, but it's an auction and it's donations. And basically what it is, it's a group of mainly businesses here in the Permian Basin, mainly oil-based, but also Walmart and places like that that have gotten together and decided that they were going to put together a fundraiser for law enforcement. So if you can imagine in this down-year-far economy that they raised enough to donate $320,000, of which our portion is 80,000. So a quarter goes to the Odessa Police Department, a quarter goes to the Ector County Sheriff's Office, a quarter goes to the Midland County Sheriff's Office, and a quarter goes to the Midland Police Department. So, you know, all the larger law enforcement agencies in this area benefited from this, and to me, it's just an amazing thing. Again, in this down year for the economy, that they were able to raise this much money. And we will use these funds for needed equipment. One of the main things that we're looking at for this is a training simulator.
Great. Any questions from council?
No, but Mayor, I sure hope there's some way that we can really thank these people for doing this. I know they've been doing this for several years, and this is a tremendous amount of money that they keep raising. So it's really provided a lot of opportunity for our police department, and I know we can't, they're not here, and we're not bringing people in, but boy, we sure, I sure hope they know how much we appreciate them.
I will have Ms. Romaldo draft a letter from the council, and we can all sign it and send it to them just to say thank you.
And that's the same way for the Walmart. I mean, you know, people that are so generous with us, and especially during these times when it's so difficult, I just, I just want to, I know we all want to be sure they know that we appreciate them.
Great point. Any other comments or questions? I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, consider accepting state dollars for J-Rac for the Odessa Fire and Rescue. Chief Huber.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Michael. Oh, I would consider accepting state J-Rac grant monies for $17,077 for EMS county pass-through dollars for Odessa Fire Rescue.
Okay, are there any questions from council? I will entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chief Huber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Item six, consider additional allocation of up to $20,000 of CARES Coronavirus Relief Funds, CRF, to go towards the City of Odessa Small Business Assistant Program. Mr. Moreira.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council. This item before you this evening for your consideration is the allocation of additional $20,000 to the COBAT program. As you know, the council established that program earlier this year and allocated $500,000 toward the program. I'm happy to say we'll hear council members Dean's report that the program has been highly successful, and it has helped those businesses that you wanted to help. This $20,000 will assist us in completing out or finishing out that program. At the time of the program's closure, there were a couple of applications in place, and so given the amount of money that already had been allocated, the additional, or the addition of this $20,000, rather, would help in making sure that we complete all of the applications that were submitted and in process at the time of the program's closure. And Ms. Dean would want to add some information she'd like, but the $20,000 again is for those businesses that were already in process at the time of the program's closure.
Councilmember Dean, would you like to say anything?
No, that's exactly right. We are at, we were at 490, and then we got a little flurry right at the end, and that put us at 500 and then 510, and we still have three outstanding that we're waiting on information. So right now, we're at the 510, and this $20,000 gives us $10,000 for those next three. You know, and it looks like that will be just exactly the amount of money that we're going to need based on the information I have. So I'll talk a little bit more about the program down on item number nine, but that's the reason for that, that these applications were already, did come in just as we were ending the program.
Are there any questions from other councilmembers?
Wonderful job, Peggy.
Thank you. I had lots of good help.
I will entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
And motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Ms. Dean. Under miscellaneous, last time we had Odessa business owner Mark Trotter talk to us about seeing if there was some help that could be given to small businesses with property taxes due. We wanted to put this on there in case council had any questions. So I will let Mr. Trotter talk for just a few minutes, and then we'll let council talk.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and I see everybody again. I came back in July, and of course, I had a, this discussion with you guys back in July. And then, of course, I've talked to Mayor since, and he told me about the CARES, the Corona Relief Funds that y'all were doing through the city. So I applied for those funds, and I talked to Peggy before, and then she sent me over to Michael. And so really, Michael, I want to know, since I've received PPP for my employees, it has nothing to do with me as my business owner, paying my bills, electric bills, my property taxes coming up. Nothing has been given to small businesses to cover any of these. So, Michael, if you would, can you explain to me why you think PPP helps the small business?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mark, I'm, this is Peggy. I'm going to go ahead and speak to that. The reason that PPP helps small businesses is that that is given to companies to assist them in paying for their employees for an eight-week period of time. And the presumption is that your business is still open during that time. Was your business still open when you were paying your employees?
That's the reason I could keep it open, to pay the employee. I could have just laid them off and put them on unemployment. And that's still, you know, it wouldn't help me pay my bills as a small business owner. I mean,
They continue to work? Did you keep them working?
Yes, I kept them on bucks because of PPP, but that didn't help my business.
Well, it's money. The idea is that you're getting free labor because they're still generating sales, and you're not having to pay for it. You're being reimbursed for that payroll, which allows them to still generate sales.
Okay, how do they generate sales, ma'am? Please explain that to me.
Well, if you have your people working, then the assumption is that they're doing something and you still have sales. That's why I ask you if you, if your business still generated sales during this time.
No, that's what I'm getting at. If I'm not doing business because I have the oil companies closed down, you have a lot of my people that I actually do business with are closed, not doing business, how does that help me? How do I sell? How do I pay my employees? They're not selling anything.
Well, I, you know, most businesses stayed open during that time to try to still have customer contact. But the point is, is that you got to keep those employees, so when things did turn around, you still had employees. I understand frustration, but the PPP loan was...
Ma'am. I'm sorry to bother you. PPP, all it did was keep my employees, me paying the employees instead of you, on unemployment lines paying the employees. So that's why they were given out. I don't get that money. The employees get that money. I don't get anything. So where are my sales? If I'm keeping these employees on it, but I have no sales revenue, how do I keep my business open? Explain that one to me.
Well, first off, 75% of the PPP money had to be spent on payroll, and the other 25% could go against rent or utilities.
If there was, that there's nothing left.
Don't let her finish, and then we'll talk.
Okay. All right.
Like I said, the presumption is that during that period of time, you still have people, they're still doing something. You're not just giving them a check for nothing. They're cleaning your shop, or they're still trying to produce inventory, or they're still doing something because you're paying them. And 75% of what you got could be used towards paying them to do things that enhance your company for the future. Like I said, create inventory, clean up your shop, do whatever. And that money is something that keeps you having employees, hopefully to generate some kind of income during that time, and it doesn't cost you anything. That program, that's what that program was designed for. Presuming that when you don't have to pay your employees, they are still doing something that creates positive worth to you, either through inventory or improvements in your shop or sales during that time.
Ma'am, okay, in my business, I own an automotive business, and there's a lot of other businesses that don't need that. I can go hire a $5-an-hour kid off the block to clean my shop. I have techs. These techs have had training, all right? I have to pay them what they made last year at this time. And that money ran out six months ago. I've been paying them on my dime. They have to keep them. Try to keep them. So I still don't know where you say my sales are. Just, I'm not going to pay my guys to clean shop for what I pay them. And that's not helping me as a business owner. It doesn't bring in revenue.
So during the six months that you're still paying them out of your pocket, are you saying that you're paying these people and they are doing nothing to generate any revenue?
I'm, that's right, because I can't find these type of people. If I go out there on the street, if I got rid of my people, and I had to go back and try to hire somebody, there is nobody that could take their place. Nobody, because they're trained techs. And there's no techs. I've been here for over 25 years. I came from Dallas a long time ago, and the people out here have zero training. They have to hire people out of other cities, big cities, to come here to do the work because they're knowledgeable. They don't have the training here. So it took me a long time, and I only got two good techs. And I pay them well, and if I let them go, I'll never get them back.
Okay, why don't we, the three, we got three councilmembers that looked over everything before we've done it. Let them have a meeting here in the next week or so and see what we can come up with. See what we've got.
But I will tell you, David, I mean, I feel his pain, but fact of the matter is that he says he's still, Mr. Trotter is still paying people out of his pocket to keep them. So that in itself says that the PPP money was worth something to him because that was two months that he did not have to pay out of his pocket to keep them. I mean, I, I'm sorry that they are not generating zero sales. That's something that you're continuing to pay them, and nobody's creating any sales.
But that's what we're here for, ma'am. Look, the way the things are that people are doing in their business, they have to pay their bills. They have to pay the lights. They have to pay everybody. There's nothing out there that has paid the small business people anything for that. Anything. The PPP has nothing to do with that.
Well, it does.
At all.
Yes, it does, sir. 25% of your money could have been spent paying your bills, paying rent and utilities.
Ma'am, I paid all that money to the employees. I had nothing left to pay for anything else. But we're not talking small dimes here. We're talking, I'm 60% down on my company's sales because of coronavirus that when y'all shut the businesses down, and the state told you to shut it down, and the federal government told them to shut it down, someone needs to come up and belly up to the bar and say, all right, we need to help these guys pay the bills, and they haven't done that yet. And it's getting...
Yeah. That's what we were trying to do with this program for small businesses that didn't get any federal assistance or the EIDL advances. And we, upfront, we said that we needed to service those businesses first. And so people that had gotten PPP would not be eligible for this simply because there's just X amount of dollars, and I'm so sorry that you fell into that. But there were some other businesses that were saying that, that had gotten EIDL loans or something, so...
Okay. Why can't we go after federal funding to fund the small business for property taxes for the city? I mean, they're the ones that shut us down. Why can't we go after that?
Well, part of it, I think, was coming with the latest relief that got canned before the election. But we can check into that and see what that was actually, because we didn't see what the package was. We just knew that it was out there and was supposed to be coming, and then one thing led to another.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you addressed this concern with the other taxing entities?
Yeah, I've talked to all my small business guys that I know. I've got about 200.
Huh? No, excuse me. I mean, with the taxing entities, the ECISD, Ector County Medical Center.
We don't know who to talk to. That's the reason, that's the reason I came back in July and said, why can't we go to the state and have them either cut 80% off of the property taxes that are due coming up this year? It says we're not making any money to pay those. Why can't they cut those out? Or why they can't let at least go 80%?
Okay, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. You know, the City of Odessa is only a small percentage of your tax bill.
I understand. You got, oh, yes, I understand.
We have no control over, over that.
But you can go to the state.
On the other side.
So can you. So can you, Mr. Trotter.
I was going to say you might stop.
My city council.
Just a sec, just a second. Let me finish. I fully, truly appreciate what a difficult time that you're having because the city is having that difficult time as well. And our sales tax are down. We have lost commercial sales tax. And, and so I personally don't see that it's feasible for us to say, cut your tax bill 80%. Even if the City of Odessa did, that would be 80% off of, what, 24%? Is that basically?
20 cents, 20 cents per dollar.
20 cents per dollar. So, I mean, we're a fraction of it. We cannot afford it. We cannot do it for you that we could not do it for other businesses.
Okay.
And there are federal funds that were made available for businesses. You've, you have received some of that. Some of our smaller businesses that did not qualify received it under this other program that the city has overseen. So, Mayor, I'm not opposed if someone wants to look into it. I don't see that this is a feasible thing for us to do. And, and so I just am going to have to leave it with that.
Okay.
We can talk to the state. State won't do anything until the next biennium, which starts January 1.
Mayor, and he can also talk to Brooks. I believe, you know, that Brooks is available on that level for Mr. Trotter to talk to Mr. Land.
Yeah, and I'll reach out and get him the number I've got, so he can talk to Brooks. And also to Cal to see what the state is going to do.
Yeah, because we got taxing, I mean, y'all want your money on January 1, or there's penalty issues. So is there going to be an extension on all these taxes coming up?
Not for the city. I don't, I don't... Not for the city, I don't, I don't believe.
We'd have, and I'm not sure what school district or anybody else is gonna do.
Yeah, because, you know, they'll have their own.
Yeah.
Number tomorrow, so you can reach out to Kel and to, uh, Brooks and see if they know of anything that's coming down the pipe.
And possibly, as Dietra had said, maybe, you know, reach out to the, you know, what, doing to the, the other entities and just, you know.
You know, because on your tax bill, ECISD receives the, the greater portion of that.
Yes.
And so it would be requesting a cut to ECISD and they're also in, in a difficult position.
And you know, yeah, I agree. I agree with you. But I'm just saying since, you know, they cut off school like three months prior to school last year, do we get that money back?
No, you didn't.
We'd have to ask them.
Exactly.
Yeah, you need to talk to them about it because they still also have the obligations towards their educators, just like what you had mentioned with your, with your.
Exactly.
They have the same thing with hundreds.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Yeah, I get it. That's the reason I'm, I'm here. I said, I think there's gotta be a way to go to the federal level and say, look, we need this much money to fund this, uh, you know, for these small businesses that we have in our area. You gotta come up with some kind of funding for us because these guys are going out of business. They can't pay these property taxes. They're not making any revenue.
I'll tell you what, Mark, I'll get you those numbers. Uh, just call me in the morning. I'll get you the number.
Okay.
Kel and Brooks.
Okay.
Get you a number to talk to Conway and see what, uh, see if they know of anything.
All right, sounds good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Trotter.
All right.
Goodness, Trotter. Next, uh, discuss COVID nineteen. I just wanted to, uh, kinda let you know what's going on, latest that I've heard. Uh, right now in West Texas, um, the state is actually in the city of Lubbock because their hospital, their hospitalization rate was so high and fifteen percent is what they look at. Uh, they are in Amarillo. Um, they're also in El Paso. Uh, El Paso is, to be honest with you, just almost decimated with what they are dealing with. Um, they brought in four trailers for, uh, corpse corpses. Um, heard today that the city of Lubbock is bringing in two portable hospitals, uh, because their hospitals are full. Um, currently right now, Big Spring Scenic Medical Center has more COVID nineteen patients than they do regular patients. So we are seeing the numbers go up. Um, over the last six weeks, we really watched Odessa's numbers start to go up. Three weeks ago, it was at four twelve, uh, for one week. Two weeks ago, it was at five twenty-two. Uh, last week it was eight thirty-two. And so far, uh, Monday and Tuesday were over four hundred, uh, cases so far, uh, this week. Um, but things that's really getting phone calls from the two hospitals. Uh, to give you an idea of where they are right now, ORMC has twenty-six admissions. And they are holding one COVID patient in the emergency room because they don't actually have a, um, a bed for them at this time. Uh, Medical Center has sixty admissions and they are holding five in the emergency room right now. Um, Middle Memorial is about the same. One thing that is hurting ORMC and Medical Center right now, ORMC has thirty-two employees that are out either with COVID or being quarantined. Uh, Medical Center has seventy-six employees out with COVID or being quarantined. Uh, right now FEMA has nurses that have been brought into Medical Center. Um, the other two hospitals are asking for nurses but have not been able to get nurses yet. Um, so we are seeing quite a few people come in. The biggest problems we have are simply not following the rules. Um, social distancing, wearing masks, you know, that's contentious, uh, topic to talk about. And just overall hygiene. Um, a lot of people did not go trick or treating. But then you saw on Facebook and social media, all the parties that were held where nobody was wearing masks. And the hospitals are, uh, screaming pretty good. I do have a meeting with, um, all the leaders in the morning to talk about it. But Mayor Peyton and I did go on TV today. I'm going to be on Channel Seven tomorrow. Just saying, hey, we've gotta get these numbers slowed down or the state's gonna come in here. Uh, we are seeing about fifteen percent hospitalizations, uh, rate right now. Went as high as seventeen one day, but then it pulls back down. So that's what we're looking at. Um, I just wanted to let you know. One thing I think Michael and I have talked about is talking to the grocery stores and the big box stores and saying, would you please lower your occupancy rate some and make, go back to cleaning like they did when COVID started? Because many times you saw them cleaning your carts at the grocery stores, uh, also asking people to wear masks. Um, there is some good news on the, um, vaccines. They are saying they may see the first ones towards the end of November. And there are two drugs that are coming in, uh, that can help with coronavirus. But that's where we are. Um, I wanted just to kinda let everybody know what was going on. Just kinda say what you're seeing and, uh, cause push comes to shove. I think maybe in the next week or two, we may have to make a call to do something to keep the state out. Uh, because I don't think we want the state in here. Right now, the occupancy levels in El Paso are at twenty-five percent. Amarillo's at fifty and Lubbock's at fifty. So that's where they're at. Currently we're at seventy-five, as everyone knows. But if we don't do something to help slow down for the hospitals, we really are going to be in to, um, be dealing with some problems. So I will open it up and let everybody kinda see what they think.
Mayor, if I could, um, I think push has come to a show. And I've, I've talked to, uh, Dr. Sarah Van and myself and the hospitals are not just asking us, they're pleading with us to do something. Um, would we first, as a community, we did really well, um, after the governor came in, did the mandate. You know, you, you saw the masking, you saw the community, uh, gearing up to try and help. And you don't see that as much now. And I think, you know, I know it's an unpopular thing to, to do. Not just masks, but to do anything. I know it's hard to enforce. But I believe that as leaders, sometimes we have to make those difficult decisions. Um, in my opinion, it has nothing to do with politics or infringing upon someone's rights or inciting fear or any of those other things that we've been hearing out there. But we have a medical community who we expect to take care of us if we get sick. Who quite frankly are at the point almost that they can't, you know, they're saying they have no more room. They have nurses, they have doctors who are out either infected or, uh, quarantined. And they really need us to, to move forward, to do something, you know? We can keep saying, you know, let's be nice and let's be kind and let's wear a mask and let's do those things, but as a city, we have to look for other ways that we can help, something that can, you know, be, um, maybe, you know, I don't like being told what to do, but it's not that. It's not about me. It's about the community. And if we help each other, we saw that when we were helping each other that, and, and wearing masks, our numbers went down. We saw that. But then we also see that when we're gathering again in, uh, groups, when we're, uh, not wearing our masks consistently, when we see some of our businesses, you know, I know they're tired as well. When we see that, that they, you know, everybody's going in in any kind of way. We have to work together, in my opinion, as a community, you know, and try and help. Cause if, God forbid, I were to get sick, I wouldn't wanna go to San, you know, have to be shipped to San Antonio or El Paso or Austin where they're actually sending people that I know of because they can't handle them here. And we have to, you know, we, we hear the community say, um, we want our kids in school. But if we don't do something, our kids are not gonna be able to be in school because it's not gonna be safe to be there, quite frankly. The school's doing a great job, but how much of a load can they continue to take? We, you know, I just think talking about it, we've gotta come up with something that we as a council, as a community, um, can do. I know we're tired. We're emotionally tired, um, drained mentally and physically drained. But being tired is not gonna send COVID on its way. It's, it's just not. It's not that simple. And so, um, if cutting back on gatherings, if requiring masks in, in businesses, um, is what it takes, then, you know, we may have to do something that's, that's just not all the way popular. But if it helps our community, it will be, it will be popular in the end because we'll have more community members still alive and able to celebrate when this is gone. So I just.
Especially the box stores have really been good. Um, you know, HEB's been fantastic. Walmart's been good.
Absolutely, but we have to continue, you know, to, to, to make sure that that happens and, uh, listen, our community is speaking. Our medical community is speaking, our schools, I mean, we, I, I don't, and I don't have the answers, but I think we need to get together and, um, talk about it. I don't want, God bless El Paso, God bless Lubbock, but I don't wanna be the next one. I don't want our community to be the next one if it's some little things that we can do to prevent that. And, um, talking with Dr. Sarah Van and there are some things, we just have to work with our community to try to get there. And I ask, and I thank the community. If community's listening, I don't know, but if they are, I thank them, you know, for trying to work with us as a community to help everybody. I mean, that last press conference you guys had on Thursday with the hospitals, it, it felt like the doctors were basically in tears, you know, because they see it. They're there every day with that. They see when possibly one that needs to stay is having to be, uh, airlifted off and they may not make it that far, you know, in a helicopter that long, you know, but they need to be here, but we can't have them here because we don't have room. When we do have beds at the hospitals, the nurses and doctors are sick, so you gotta have nurses and doctors to take care of you in those beds. And so I know it's unpopular and I know that, you know, some people say it's politics and it's throwing things, but you know, they could say that about stopping at a red light and we have to do that. I mean, that's just what we have to do. So, um, that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Dietra, what do you think?
I'm with Mayor on this one. You know, um, I'll say when, you know, it, back in the spring when we addressed a mask mandate, I did not vote in favor of it and, but my reason was primarily, I, I didn't think that we had worked out all the enforcement requirements of that. I mean, it was kind of a new thing. We also had a group of people that came and they were very vocal against it and I appreciate their input. I was shocked at the number of emails I got after that, the people that couldn't believe we didn't, you know, enforce it. Uh, I think that that, I believe, that's something that we may need to entertain again and discuss as a group if, if we feel that that's, um, if that's the direction that we need to go. I know that, uh, Walmart and, and some of the big box, they really had the big signs posted in front there for a while and they don't anymore. And people have gotten very casual. Uh, I agree with Mayor on that one. Uh, there, I was very surprised in the last week, how many people I see that don't have masks.
Okay, Peggy, what do you think?
Well, I listened today to, uh, you and the mayor in Midland and, and I thought you made some really good points. Um, one of the issues I believe is that we have, we've gotten real passive about this. If you look at the newspaper, you know, it's in the same format every day, you know, you see the numbers. I don't even really look at them much anymore. And, you know, I think people are just, um, as Mayor said, they're tired and they're just not paying any attention. I think that, my opinion would be that we should put on a pretty extensive public service notice, um, advertising campaign between now and Thanksgiving and say, Thanksgiving's coming up, do not do this. The El Paso has four, uh, refrigerated trucks, you know, but, you know, some of the facts that are just really harsh and let people know that if this continues, we're gonna be forced to do that. In other words, it's like giving your child a two-week notice and say, if, if this happens, then we are gonna be forced to do this. And, and you know, so people start monitoring each other because quite honestly, I do not believe that, that we have enough policemen, enough manpower that we could, that we could issue violations for this. I just don't. I don't think that's how you get people to wear masks. I think you get them to wear masks by scaring the bejesus out of them by, by saying, look, you may not be paying attention to this, but this is what's happening. And I don't know how we do that, but I know we had some public service things that were going. And I think that we should put a timeline that says, you know, we're concerned the state's gonna come in. If we can't, the only thing that we can do is wear a mask. We can't do anything else. We can social distance and wear a mask and let's, let's all commit to it, especially with Thanksgiving coming up. And if it doesn't, then I think we're gonna be forced to do something else. I mean, I don't think, I don't think there's gonna be any option. Right now, you know, I know the city of Midland is gonna do this as well. You know, right now, I think we need to remind people harshly, you know, that this is not, this hadn't gone away. It's gotten worse. And when you're in groups, you know, you continue to spread. I mean, we just need to put this back in their face and scare them a little. It was really scary when you saw all of those, all those people dying in New York City. And when you've seen different, I mean, there were things that were just, took our attention and went, oh my gosh, we don't want that to happen here. And I'm not saying that we make a public display out of people's death, but I'm saying we need to remind people that this is still here and it's serious. And, you know, even if it's something on a public service that says, you know, somebody goes to the hospital and they say, I'm sorry, there's no room here, you know, just little quips like that that make people think this is your hospital, this is your city. I mean, you've gotta help here. So, I don't know, I'm kinda ranting and raving, I know. But I, I think that we need some really in-your-face kind of reminders and prefaced with it says, this is gonna be out of our control. We're not gonna have any choice but to cut things back if we can't get a handle on this.
Tom, what do you think?
Well, I, I too listened to the, the, um, news conference this afternoon. And, and for reasons that has already been explained tonight, I, there's, putting a ma- mask mandate on is just not effective or desirable and will do nothing because, um, hate and consternation. You know, we're just not gonna like each other, you know, after doing that. I do think, and I, Michael, tell us where we are on our advertising that we have been doing through the city so far.
Yeah, Tom, thank you for that question. I'm actually gonna defer that to Devon and she can walk you through where we started with our messaging, where that messaging has taken place and more importantly, how the message can be changed and will change as a result of where we are with our numbers today. David, Devon, you wanna, you wanna talk to the council about that?
Yes, sir. So, um, at, at the beginning, we did kinda start with the whole wear a mask campaign and we, um, have had to change it a couple of times. I guess the past two months or so, we've really focused heavily on the testing, um, our drive-through testing and partnership, more recently our partnership with ORMC and MCH. I did meet with Red Pixel Marketing today after the press conference to discuss how that messaging needs to change. We kinda thought that we would maybe, you know, write out the rest of the year, just focusing on getting people tested and, and utilizing free testing in that free flu shot. But we realized very quickly we needed to change something. Um, so we already have Jose, we have Magali working on some graphics to send out to the news stations to post on their Facebook page in English and in Spanish, just kind of saying, you know, we started with some ideas, maybe like the three W's, get back to the basics, just kinda trying to figuring out that message of how that would work. And Jose and Magali are great with that, so they're gonna figure that out. But we also talked about what that messaging needed to be a message. And I think you're absolutely right. We have been trying to kind of steer away from being either one way or the other. We had been very careful about our messaging, not trying to look like it was a political thing because that, frankly, that, that's how kind of everybody viewed it for the time is that it was something political and we didn't. frankly, that, that's how kind of everybody viewed it for the time, is that it was something political and we didn't want to see that. We just wanted to inform everybody. But we did realize that today it is now more serious. Um, I think everybody is a little bit more aware of, of how serious it is when you look at the numbers. So, we have some ideas. There's one to kind of take it from a medical professional's point of view. It's kind of the, you know, the I believe because I know, um, like, you know, I, I believe that wearing a mask is going to help you and then it transitions and you see that she's in front of a hospital, she's walking into a hospital because she's a nurse. There's another one that's really great and it's a little bit shocking without being too scary, kind of, um, a domino effect of how just one little thing that you do can cause this spread everywhere and kind of create hotspots all over. It's very visually appealing. It's very clean and the messaging is very clear and it's stern. And I think that's what we are really trying to focus on is being stern with our messaging, whereas in the past, we have really tried to tread lightly on go, you know, trying to not scare anybody, trying not to take it too lightly, trying not to make it seem like we are being political at all. But now that I think that we've heard from all of you guys that, that we need to be a little bit more, um, aggressive with that, we, we will definitely do that.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I could, uh, Renee Earls and I, um, met sometime, oh, months ago, I guess, when this first started with, with some groups of young people. And what they said at that time was that they really, uh, didn't take it as serious because it had happened to nobody. And so maybe even, um, consider those who might come forth and just in the advertising, you know, say something to know that it, it happens to people who we may think it looks like it wouldn't happen to, whatever that looks like. But you know, the young people said, well, we really didn't know anybody. We didn't see anybody, you know, so we really didn't take it serious. And that was out of the mouths of, um, oh gosh, I can't, I think they're 18 to 30-year-olds, maybe.
They were pretty young.
Yeah. And, and, and so I still see some of that happening, you know, in that age group, although it's affecting everybody now. But you know, maybe just some, some of those who will, uh, participate in some of that, um, advertising, you know, just where, where young people can relate to it as well as older, you know, it's, it's got to be real for, for a lot of people or it's not real.
Well, but so many people I've talked to, now they know somebody who's died. And that's something that I think before really didn't affect, but
Right.
You know, I know this person who grandmother died, I lost an aunt to it, you know, and you're starting to see it get a lot closer to home, which I think y'all talk about advertising may help.
Right. And I agree with Peggy on a, on a timeline because you know, I think uh, not place a timeline or not to say we're going to come back. To me, it's a disservice to the hospitals that are crying out for our help. It's like, okay, we talked about it, let's move on and we need to do more than talk about it and move on.
Reverend, what do you think?
Whoa, this is a heavy subject that we talk about all the time, especially when it comes down to this virus stuff. We say we are Odessa strong, so we need to come together as a city and, and stand up and say, well, we don't want what happened in Lubbock and the rest of the city, El Paso and everything to happen here. And the only way we can do that, we have to step up as Odessas and say that we want to slow it down. And the only way we can be able to slow it down, we have to show by leadership, wearing the masks ourself to show other people that it, it may not affect you right now, but later on down, it will affect you. So we have to step up and say, well, okay, well, take on the responsibility. I don't care where I go in this city. I wear my mask. I'm showing my leadership. I am the city councilman here and I show leadership. And that's what we need to do. We need to step up as strong Odessas and say, we can, we can accomplish this if we stand up together and say, we can face this together as a city. So we don't allow the state to come in and make a mandate that we got to follow. I know we talked about it a while ago about the ma- mask mandate, yes. Uh, I voted against it. The reason why I voted against it is because I had, I looked at it in the longer and a broader way of saying, how can we ma- how can we mandate this? How can we enforce this? And it had to come from the governor's office for it to be enforced because it comes from the state level. But we as citizens of Odessa need to say, our doctors are pleading with us, our nurses are pleading with us to wear the mask. It has nothing to do about your political, uh, denomination or anything like that. Wear it to save other people's lives besides your own. That's showing leadership in the community. That's showing leadership in the city, saying that we are leading by example. I, I'm, I'm doing it. I, I tell everybody at my church the same way. If you come to our church, you have to wear a mask, you wear, you have to sanitize it. We are six feet, we're six feet apart in the church and everything. So if we mandated for everywhere else, why can't we mandate it for our own self?
And you know, Mayor, I don't think it's only the mask. I think it's the attitude. It's the buy-in. It's the, it's the, um, it's the empathy, it's the sense of community that I want to help the person that it might affect. I want to help the elderly. I want to help the immune compromised. I want to help the doctors. I want to help. It's, it's, it's an attitude, not so much just the mask or just washing your hands or just social distancing. It's somehow we've got to encourage that the attitude must change or we're El Paso.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's the, um, it's, it's to be, uh, uh, invest into it. We got to get them invested into it to the point is the same to the point that the, the more we wear masks, the less we have to worry about this. It's going to be here for a while. It's not going to disappear. It's going to be here for a while. So we have to adapt to it. And the only way to adapt to it is to wear the mask and keep social distance and follow the, the, the mandates has been set down for the stores and wherever we go to. And when you go in there and they require you to wear that mask, wear it. That's just showing that you care for somebody else's life as well as yours.
And I, yeah, I think just like Mara just said, and I think Devon can probably put pieces together like this, you know, like the one that she did with all the city employees. You know, it might be even, I don't know if it's on TV or if it's on social media or, or whatever, but just like that. If you had Mara, you know, saying for 15 seconds, this is about attitude. You know, w- we want Odessa to be better. We want to save lives. And you have different people with just one or two one-liners that are strong statements. You know, I know, I can't tell you the number of people that comments that I got just about the assistance, the COBAC program. And you know, we didn't start running that, Craig did towards the end, and there were so, there's something about people hearing from people they know. Right. And, and I think that, you know, Devon, if you put together like a 30-second spot with just, you know, people that we know, whether it's council or what, you know, with those little one-liners like that that, that really make a difference, you know, wear a mask, save a life, you know, those kinds of things. Uh, and, and just simply, we don't want to be El Paso. And, and those kinds of just one-liners all put together with different people saying them, I think it could be very powerful.
I think you could do it. You remember
Yes.
the breast cancer? You know,
Yeah.
I run for my grandmother. I run for my mom or, you know, I do this, but you know, you could say I wear a mask because of my grandmother. I wear a mask as a child. And that might be something that we could really work towards. Do what you got.
You know, I, I, no question, we have gotten complacent. That, that is, that is not a question. The word I'm trying to think of, and I think it's the most important word that we have, is we need to respect our fellow citizens. I think it's a word of respect and, and that wearing the mask is a respect for your fellow citizens. As community, as Mara has mentioned, we as a community need to get together and we need to do it now. This isn't something we need to wait on. We need to educate as quickly as we can. We need to publicize as quickly as we can and we need to do it now for the benefit of our fellow citizens and respect for our fellow citizens.
And for, and for, and for the medical profession.
That's, those are our fellow citizens. And that's what I'm talking about. Those people that are there every day are asking us to help. We need to do it. We need to do it.
They are, they are begging us. I talked to Dr. Sarah Bannon today and, and they are, they are desperate.
And Dewey, I think your, your word, I mean, I think it's easy, I think someone should say, we have become complacent. But hospitals cannot afford to be complacent.
No.
They are completely, I mean, you know, just things like that, that just, somebody sitting there goes, oh, wow.
And it is a respect of your fellow citizens and the wearing the mask. It's a respect for that. And that's important in our community. We've got to have respect for each other and part of that is wearing that mask right now, keeping the six foot, watching the, the, the guidelines that have been established for us. We've got to keep following the rules. We got complacent.
And you know, I know Renee, uh, you know, when the president came, the chamber was able to get almost every business on their signs to put something about welcome the president. And you know, Renee may be able to send out, uh, you know, just a blast email and ask everybody for the next two weeks between now, Thanksgiving, you know, to put a sign, I mean, to make their sign say, wear a mask, save a life or something.
And help enforce it and help enforce that business.
Yeah.
Help enforce it.
I think it's, I just think it's urgent. As, as Dewey said, I don't think, you know, we can him, it's urgent. They're asking us and I think we need to show as leaders that it may be, it may be hard for us or, but we've got to do it and we've got to do it quickly, you know, whatever it is. And, and show them, I mean, because any of us, let me look at these faces. Most of us are in a vulnerable position and should we need medical attention, we want the best and we want to be right here in our community. And unfortunately, that may not happen.
I would ask Mayor as much as anything is what Mara and the whole group are saying. Let's move quickly. Let's use everything that we can that, uh, you know, with, uh, the blast on, uh, Facebook, the blast on, uh, the, the, uh, networks that we all have through the chamber, through the other areas. Let's really try to help enforce our citizens to, to, to move forward and help each other out and let's get this under control.
Yeah. Amen.
Work on it tomorrow then.
And we might even consider, we might even consider having another, having a press conference that worked pretty well. It got us some good media.
It really did.
And we could say, this is what's going to happen if we don't do this.
I'll talk to the leaders tomorrow because we'll have the press conference on Thursday. Um, and we'll have everybody together in the morning. I'll, I'll make these suggestions.
Thank you.
And if they cannot, we can, you know, if-
Yeah, I'm talking about us having one if, if nothing else.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
All right, we'll get to work on it. Um,
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Discuss city of Odessa Business Assistance Program. Councilmember Dean.
Yeah, I sent, uh, I, I think Randy sent out to you all the, the summary of, of the names of the businesses that we have, uh, helped and the amounts that were given and the names of those. Uh, I know, I'm, I think this is probably the first time you all have actually seen the names, so I wanted you to have those. Uh, I also did a little, uh, just a little summary below that said the number of businesses, um, and the number, um, you know, we did 48 businesses loan grants that, uh, got $2,500. 30 businesses got $5,000. 24 got $10,000. Um, we turned, we had to deny 21 and then I took the reasons that they weren't approved. Um, and 11 of them were like Mr. Trotter and, you know, I feel so badly about that, but we decided at the beginning of this program that we wanted to hit micro businesses that had not received any other assistance. And, uh, and that's exactly what we did. So 11 of the applicants had received PPP or EIDL advances, so they were declined. Uh, and then you can see the reasons for the others. So, um, we've got three still outstanding. We have, have or will by Friday have written $510,000 in checks. So I think we can be really proud of that. I want to especially thank Cruz Castillo and Gavin Norris and Virginia Ruiz and Mara and Michael Shelton, who was on here in the beginning and Dewey, um, and Randy especially, um, at the city. So, you know, it has been a, it has been a process and I think it's one that we can all feel real proud of ourselves for.
I think that's exactly right.
Yeah, I agree entirely, Dave, uh, David with, with, with what Peggy said. Peggy, I think we really hit the people we needed to, and I think the guidelines that we established and the, um, uh, the reasonings behind it were extremely well. Um, PPP program hit a different person. These, this program hit, uh, really the people that we were trying to, to meet. And I, I commend you and your, and the group for what we, what was accomplished. Good deal.
Yep. I commend you on the great work there, Peggy. Um, I'm sorry I had to leave out of it because I had to run for the position. But I commend you on a great job and I commend the, the, the team that you, we put together and everything that we did it, we accomplished what we set out to do. And that's to help the ones that was in need of help at the time.
Sure.
I commend Peggy and the team as well. And just, um, having came in late on it, I can tell you that the people that I dealt with who, um, were, who were approved, um, they were very, very grateful, you know, and they were willing, you know, when they had the information, they were very cordial. They, they always were, were wanting to bring whatever information they needed. I never really ran into anyone that was, you know, some may have been disappointed in the amount, but never anyone that was truly ungrateful or you know, in any way unthankful. And so it was a very good process. It was, um, I think, uh, Peggy, Dewey and that group, I want to just commend you because I came in the end, but it was, it was work, you know, it wasn't just a, a matter of looking at an application and saying, okay, Randy, thank you, because I would ask her a couple of times and then I'd realize that I'd already asked her and she stuck in there with me. So, I just commend everybody on, on that effort, you know, and, uh, and I'm glad we could do something positive. And I, you know, for, for our community, it, it was really positive and the people were so thankful.
Yep.
I, I want to tell you all too that Midland is doing a similar program. And I, I know Michael talked with them and then I spent a little over, on the phone going over, uh, with the group that's going to administer it, you know, what we had done and the things that didn't work and what we would do a little different. So, I think that that was, you know, that was pretty nice that we set up the program because we created this ourselves. And, uh, you know, it caught their attention too, and they are doing that for their small businesses as well. That's great.
A lot of people are getting it helps. All right.
Uh, can I ask a real quick question? Uh, Peggy, I'm, I'm just kind of looking at the list. Um, what is Mr. Trotter's business name?
Uh, he, he didn't even actually get to this, to where, he didn't actually ever send in his, um, he sent in an application, but when we, oh, and I forgot to thank Wesley for that too and, and Renee from the chamber, because they did a great job on this committee. Uh, he didn't, I, I, we didn't actually even do a checklist on him because when he sent it in, we had a question, this, did you get PPP loans?
Yeah.
And, uh, and his answer was yes.
Okay.
And so we didn't, you know, unfortunately, he's not on this list because in the beginning there were a couple that, um, you know, like Wes, for instance, I think, I'm pretty sure he had Mr. Trotters and he just opened it up, saw the answer to that question and sent back and said, that doesn't qualify. And then, and then I started putting this spreadsheet together, trying to get everything that we had applications that we'd processed. So, I thought the very same thing, but I remember specifically that there were maybe two in the very beginning. I think Virginia had one and Wes had one that I, I checked back and said, I never heard on these. And they said, they didn't qualify because they had had the EIDL advance. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, Ms. Grimaldo, do we have any committee appointments?
Yes, we do. For the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, reappointments of Deidre White, Tom Sprouse, Dr. Henry Lied, Susan Clark. Dr. Henry Lied, Susan Clark, Connie Coop, Lisa Frost, and Joyce Trower.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes, we don't have any citizen comments on non-agenda items, Ms. Grimaldo?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, we will need to recess executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, a city council may adjourn into executive session to consider pending or contemplated litigation and personnel matters, deliberate, the employment evaluation duties, discipline, complaint or dismissal of public officer or employee under Texas Government Code 551.074. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, if you will hook up to the, uh, other invitation.
Hey, Tom.
Hey, Reverend.
Seems like me and you got here first.
Yeah, I know, I, I got part of it on my iPad, part of it on my PC.
Think y'all might still be in the public meeting.
Y'all are on the public meeting, if y'all could switch over to the invitation for executive session.